Sorry. Okay. There's no public hearing this is fine. No delegations. Question period. Nine.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilor Ken Duplessis. Be it resolved that items A1 to F6 and the part one consent agenda be adopted.
Your Honor, could we move item D1 to the regular agenda, please?
D1, yeah.
Your worship, just a little point of order there. We've been kind of lax with our procedural bylaw, and if we're going to sever something, we should probably follow the procedural bylaw to do it, which means it needs a seconder in the...
You're moving, Ron?
He moved, now I'll second.
And you have to, there has to be a vote?
All favor. All right, under the E section, any questions or comments? Under the D section, any questions or comments? Under, well, we severed D, so anything under D2, any questions or comments? Under the E section, any questions or comments? And under the F section, any questions or comments? Counselor Ken.
I have a question under the Public Works report on the water meters. They may all be in, I don't know, since five, this is last month. What I'm wondering is, when will that, has anybody been charged under the water meters yet, or is that software not in?
Not for this fall.
We're just working right now on getting the software integrated, and we're going to have a six to nine month trial period, so there's been no bills calculated using your personnel.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor, good.
I have a question here. Have we done a balance to see whether or not, no, the study indicated that the industrial and commercial group was using a lot more water. I wonder if the water meters that we've installed have indicated that's really the case.
We don't have any information yet.
We're not using them yet?
Okay, so we don't have any readouts or anything there yet? Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, where is it going to be read? Once we have the software?
It'll be remote. So once Public Works does their...
Road inspections.
Road inspections.
Under the minimum maintenance standard. We'll sit on the dash of the truck, and Mr. Parker does the inspections for road evaluations. The meters will automatically...
As soon as you go by them?
Yeah.
And will this be like a regular thing, monthly, or how long will you do it?
The inspections under the minimum maintenance, we have two week, three week, four week inspections.
No, I wonder with the water, are you going to do it on a monthly basis, like we do with the, like we do now for residential on the high road?
Yeah.
We do a monthly bill.
It's going to be monthly, there's going to be a water bylaw that comes to council for adoption, but it's going to stop all that.
Well, I think it would have to be kind of consistent if you want to do an evaluation.
Anything else?
Just, just one more item. These water meters can be read on site as well, right? If I'm correct? Yet, like, I mean, if need be.
Can, right?
As in, if the homeowner, if the homeowner wanted to see how much water they have accumulated?
Homeowner, or let's say one of, somebody that needs to build them, for example. If you, if the software fails or something fails in the field, will it be still...
Yes, there's still...
There's an immediate.
Yes, that way the customer, the client can, his numbers will...
Sure. Yeah, that sounds good. Okay.
But they're building, yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you have a question?
We've all heard the motion, items A1 to F6 inclusive. Contained department consent agenda be adopted. All in favor? Terry.
Except item D1, because that was...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I kept the... I didn't read that part.
Okay, item D1, G. Moved by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilor Bill Foster. Be it resolved that, as recommended by the Community Services Committee, that staff is directed to apply for grant opportunity from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program for asset condition, and specifically road status assessment through local authority service LAS for municipal buildings. Be it therefore resolved that the town of Esplanola commits to conducting the funding activities in its proposal, proposed projects submitted to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program to advance our asset management program. Mobile sensing roads data collection, roads assessment data processing, payment management plan utilizing a GIS-based software analytics platform, completion of a facility condition index for municipal buildings. Be it further resolved that the town of Esplanola commits up to $10,000 from its budget towards the cost of this initiative.
Counselor Ken, you ahead?
I did have questions. Yeah, I see the minutes last update was in 2012. Were the buildings assessed at that time too?
No, we never had a real assessment on buildings.
In terms of major roads, it says we have 25 kilometers of them. What are our major roads?
Joel, if you want to answer, I mean, how does it...
Yeah, Hudson and Highway sets, it's your Second Avenue, Barber, Title, Irving Drive, Queen's Way, those are like the main...
Are these the major roads?
Collection, I think, is called, no, arteries. Well, they're the major, when people are leaving, they're helping, if you want to access Barber, that...
Okay.
Yeah, Second Avenue.
Are the roads that are hardtopped, are they considered paved?
No, not really.
I'm not saying if they're going, if they're going to do the survey, you know, they won't be doing those?
I don't believe so.
You don't, you're not sure?
I'm not sure, because I wasn't at the presentation for that. Under, when you're looking at the PCI index, there are different rules for surface treated roads. So I'm not all that familiar with their software and how they're measuring, because they're, they're measuring like the vibration in the road, and they're applying a PCI index. The PCI index is usually strictly refers to asphalt surfaces, which is why I don't think it's...
Okay, so most likely they didn't do that in 2012 either.
2012 was, it was, we looked at that as a department, yes. Because PCI is done in 2012, was done through Public Works.
Oh, not this part?
Not this part.
Oh, there, okay.
Counselor Bob. Actually, there's 98, this would, this would do 98 kilometers of paved roads, is what this would do. Of treated asphalt surface roads. The, of course, it's grant funded. Just read this, but I'll sit back and wait and see if there's any more questions on it.
Counselor Ken.
Yeah, I sent this on to staff, they may already seen it beforehand about a month ago, when I saw something from AMO come out, and I thought, no, this would be a great asset to actually get some factual evidence to support your asset management plan. We have tens of millions of dollars tied up in paved roads, and how we manage that and maintain that, you can save big dollars if you do it right. So I doubt very much when you did the last study back in 2012 or so, that you got every road, okay? Would that be fair to say?
I think we got most of them, actually. It was an ongoing process. The idea is if you do it third every year, you don't have to. But our tangible capital asset manager specialist at the time was, had skipped a year or two, and was trying to do them all in one shot, because she was efficient and proficient at it.
Counselor Ken.
Okay, I was just going to say there, so, so having the factual evidence tied right into the software, I think will really be an asset to the community, okay? And we've structured the administrative organization, so we've got somebody who's able to dedicate more time to asset management planning, and I think that's critical, that we support that person with some good tools.
Counselor Ken.
Does that determine what road you're going to do next? Or is it a conjunction with, say, you know, down there, old sewer system?
It's a tool that council uses, yes. I mean, for example, when you look at funding for the CWWF funding, some of the roads will be selected, we're using roads that are, you can also driven by water quality, for example, or leader lines in it. So council will be able to look from a PCI index, one of our worst roads, but what are also some of our other challenges? We can tie in water and sewer, and then council is looking at the capital project that's going to have the best bang for their buck. And it also helps guide council making maintenance decisions, for, for example, in a, when your assets might be from a paved surface condition, you know, it's 50 years old, it's deteriorating, now's the time to do a shave and pave. You invest into that road structure, but then you prolong the life of your asset for another 10 or 15 years without going to major reconstruction.
Counselor Ron.
Just a little clarification here. You said it was mostly on asphalt road. Then I heard a number coming out of 98 kilometers, but we only have 98 kilometers.
Okay, can you work that?
But that is a dollar figure, 98 kilometers?
Two lane.
I'm just confused. This motion here is just to do asphalt, am I right?
I can't confirm. I suspected it does not include surface treatment roads.
Okay, but we're not sure.
No, but we have about 136 kilometers of roads.
Of roads, yeah, I know, not a lot, biggest part is...
No.
The other thing is, we did it ourselves in 2012, you said, I don't understand. Did we have the capability to do as well as all the research on it? Or we had to talk whatever we could?
Well, no, it's...
I'm not sure what the difference is.
Well, what the difference is, is we go out and look at the road, and there's a criteria, what's your center line crack? How much center line crack do you have in the road? And then you also have to measure the thickness, and that all gets plotted in to your charts. And then there's a formula that takes all that information, the width of your cracks, how frequent the severity of the cracks, and the frequency along the road. If a center line crack is more than 50% in the road, it's going to be the severe center line crack, that it looks at, it looks at your flushing of your asphalt, it looks at wheel rubbing, it looks at transverse class alligator cracks, shoulders, so it's all...
So they're doing virtually the same thing.
Except they're using a truck, and they've converted those formulas to a physical vibrating sensor on the road.
Okay, the other thing, do we have this money in the budget? I know we're going to take it from the budget, but do we have it in the budget? Is it part of our budget in Public Works?
We never budgeted specifically for this, because we didn't know that this was going to happen.
So are we going to juggle something, or do we have to just hold it?
I'm sure we can accommodate it somewhere in the budget, otherwise we can take it from our road's reserves.
But also, this is going to be funded, and we're only going to pay a portion. Our portion's going to be over $4,300. So it's not like the full thing's coming out of there. Counselor Bob.
Okay, first of all, I'll clarify, the 98, I guess nobody, I should have, didn't say it loud enough. It's 98 lane kilometers of asphalt. In other words, both lanes. So that's how it got to be 98. I guess maybe I didn't say it loud enough, or whatever. Listen, I'm fully in support of this. It's $4,300. The staff could not, the question was asked at Community Services, the staff could not finish this, this year themselves, and the staff time involved to prepare this would, the cost of that would far exceed what we, what we can do here for $4,300. Not to mention the quality of the information will far exceed what staff can do. And that's not beating on you guys, Joel, that is simply stating a fact. This is a sound, scientific, proven technology that will give us some really good information for planning, budgetary, and grant purposes, and we need to have an asset management plan, as we all know, the province mandates it, to determine the deterioration of roads at an early stage and dictates what we do in terms of preventive maintenance and so on. Really, if you, if you're, I think Counselor Foster made the point, but I will beat it anyway. You cannot reasonably plan without information, and this is a forward-thinking initiative. The infrastructure deficit is partly due to a lack of information in the past, and if you look at the type of reports that can be presented by this survey, they can do a lot of things with it, and there'd be a lot of really sound information to come from it. Thank you.
Just going to add to that for a second. At the community's meeting, I wasn't too sure whether, what I was going to do with this, but as I read it again and went through the steps, I, I think it's a really good idea. The depth that it's being scanned is 18 inches. Normally, when we do a road, yeah, sometime we get down that deep, sometime we don't. However, this machine gets down that deep every time. And that would better prepare the crew to place their gravel in certain areas, so the preparation time would be, it wouldn't have to be in conjunction so much with the actual road being worked on. It could be done prior. So preparation in mind and everything else, I think it's, I think it's a pretty good deal.
Good progress. We're going to get something done a lot quicker and a lot more efficiently, and I think that that's worthwhile letting happen, because we can't, they're coming up with technology now, but if we stay behind, we're going to take a while. How many years to go ahead and do that, Joel, in the township?
To do an evaluation?
Yes.
Of course, it's all dependent on how much time we have available to dedicate to it, but I could see staff...
Just the ballpark.
I mean, I could see staff maybe hammering it out in four or five months, if we're lucky, if it's not continuous, but...
But yeah, you can't supply somebody there daily.
But I mean, it's, I think in the staff report says, if this gets done through LAS, then staff can focus in another area of the asset management, making it...
Exactly.
Building it up for a better tool.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just one more.
One more, go ahead.
We have a program right now that will help us read this disinformation, am I correct? That GIC, I believe?
GIS.
Or S, I'm sorry?
We're in the process of getting that installed. I think our preliminary data is there, but we're not actually using it, but we should be able to integrate that.
Oh, for at least that level? Oh, okay, that's good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, no one else? All in favor? Terry.
Okay, the next item, G1, moved by Councilor Yoplin, seconded by Councilor before. Be it resolved that Industry Canada, now Industry Science and Economic Program, can be advised that the little bit completed consultation operations according to the tax requirements. Therefore, the town of Esplanola has no objection to the construction of a 45 meter communication structure on the lands immediately known as 16 McCullough Drive.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Oh, sorry. I thought everybody went, hey. I was, I said there was something I wanted to ask, and I couldn't remember what it was. I thought you'd give me more time. Sorry. It was just for the, the, I was reading through it, and I can't see where they're going to put their guys in or their anchors. Are they going to be providing anchors? Do we know? I didn't, I couldn't read it in there.
We don't know.
We don't know, they said it was some supporting, or to some extent, eh? So I'm just not positive now if there's going to be anchors attached or not, because normally you have to go quite far for the footage, and this is going to be, what, 45 meters or so?
Yeah, 45 point something.
Yeah. Yeah, something like that.
I am not familiar with the construction, other than it's, it falls under...
It falls under, yes.
And other than the base, you know, there's not a law, there's no permit really that would come from the town.
Right. Okay, I was just wondering where they were going to set up those anchors if they, if they needed them? That was basically...
They would definitely be within that property.
Okay, because that, that is hard to do, but anyway.
Yeah, but that's, that's definitely, maybe within that 16 McCullough Drive.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to comment, I'm sure that there are engineers that did this design for them.
Yeah.
Has auto done, it's way beyond our school.
Yeah.
I would think that if we'd engineer it in with the town...
Want to comment or questions? All in favor? Terry. All right, bylaw and resolutions, none correspondence for information only. municipal repairs correspondence regarding Bill 68. Conference and conventions, the AMO conference in August 13th to the 16th in Ottawa, Ontario. Mayor and council reports and announcements. Verbal. I let a page here in, it's Saturday, July 1st, calendar 150 years, community celebration, and Mayor and council are, want to be there for the end date, or should be there for the end date, and the cake cutting at the outdoors, at the town office area. And there are many, many other events that are going to take place, and it would be good of us if we could, some of us at all, go and be there.
Outdoors, is that weather permitting?
Get tough.
Bring your gun.
Yeah, bring your gun.
Might have to duck raise here?
Be like me.
Anyway, Bob, you're the next.
Oh, okay, thank you, your worship. Just a couple of things. Recently, we've had an unusual number of very severely disastrous structure fires, and repeatedly I've heard around town just a, a number of compliments about our volunteer fire, fighters' response time and professional conduct. Obviously, all that training pays off, they did us very proud, and they did a great job, and they really need to be thanked for that. And speaking of volunteers, everybody's probably saw the statistics from the car show, that was a hugely successful event. Now the final statistics are in for a number of groups in town, and they just couldn't keep up. And a lot of, you know, these people, our volunteers, serve us very well, and where they, they find the energy. Have to think Public Works, if it ever stops raining, I'm sure we'll get lots of nice color from the boxes and the planters around town, and the beds, but it has to stop raining, I think. And you mentioned, oh, and one thing, just a reminder for residents, that the town has on our website a list of information links and an email address for questions, if they have any, for to pose for the upcoming OPP service proposal. Thank you, your worship.
I have nothing, but I do concur with Counselor Yoplin.
Yes, I was going to say the same thing about the fires, I hear nothing but good things in Yoplin, and I hear how people call me, how lucky we are to have the volunteers we do at the fire hall, because I guess they were at one fire and were called to another one, and they didn't get back in until five in the morning, three in the morning, I heard five.
Three, no, three, three fires.
Oh, yeah, yes, and five in the morning, and then some of those people have to work. They have full-time jobs, this is the voluntary, so it's certainly nice to have that caliber of people volunteering for us. The other thing is, I know we spoke about water meters this night, and I don't know, every time we talk about water meters, I get a million questions. You're putting them in residential. We aren't putting them in residential, it's a no decision, actually, it's been a decision by this council, never to put them in residential, but down the road, I can't speak very well there. So just in case it comes up. And the other thing is, is I see Mr. Lindrum going home today with his pontoon boat, I think he really needs to be congratulated. He did it last summer, he's at it again, where he takes his pontoon boat once a week, down to the Black Creek, landing site, and takes handicapped children and any other children to show up, and he tours one group up the river in the morning and another group in the afternoon for any kids that want to go. And certainly that's more than a voluntary, he puts his own truck, boat, and everything.
He takes community living people up there.
And he'll take any kids that show up.
Yeah.
And he does two, two runs, morning and afternoon, if there's children that want to go. One day a week.
Excellent.
So that's really nice, and I think he needs to be commended. Thank you, your worship.
Counselor Ken.
June 15th was seniors appreciation day at the complex and library. The turnout wasn't as expected, but there was some very good presentations, and a very good job by the Public Works on the parking lot on Temple. Looks very nice.
Yes, it worked really well. Really well. Counselor Bill.
I don't have anything, I was going to mention the parking lot there, but it's already done. It's all right.
Such to be lost.
You got it. Feature council committee meeting, we don't have any numbers here. On the next page, sorry. Regular council meetings of June 27, 2017, regular council meeting of council, July the 11th, we were talking about that earlier, at 7:30 PM, and this meeting is now adjourned. If you call it over?
Yeah.
Call the meeting if required, we're going to move it down.
Could I, could I add something, Ron? Do we, because on meetings there, don't we have a meeting on July 12?
July 12.
July 12, and don't we have another one July 5th or 7th? Is that the police?
Oh, yes.
So, there's a recreation review?
At 9 o'clock.
It'll be a member of the day's session. There's going to be a member of the ministry here to talk about...
The day is that, 6th, is that?
Uh, the Wednesday, I think.
I can send something out tomorrow.
Yeah, can you send it for all?
Okay, thank you.
For sure, yeah.
And then July 12th, consultants for the recreation master plan will be here to present.
Regular meeting and conference here by adjourned. All in favor? Eric?